I call the school board meeting to order. Could you please take the roll, Ms. Callahan? And do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I move that the agenda be adopted as written.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board, the school agenda be adopted as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, tonight, we are really lucky to have two boy, do we have both here? Is Amy here? Okay, great. We have two Boy Scout troops with us to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to invite Melanie Grandelli from Troop 1930 out of Morrisville, and also Amy Kuhler, Troop 1187 out of Bealton, come and talk about what your scouts are doing here tonight and introduce them so we could see who's here.
Sure. Good evening. We are Troop 1930 out of Morrisville, and most of us are here tonight for Communication Merit Badge. So we're hoping to hear opposing points of view offered on at least one topic. We have our Senior Patrol Leader, Steven Brooks, from Liberty High School here. Austin Shutt from Taylor Middle School. John Brooks from Cedar Lee Middle School. Ryan Airy, also from Cedar Lee Middle School. Justin Wilt from Taylor Middle School. And Abe Grandelli, homeschooled.
We are Troop 1187. We meet at Morrisville United Methodist Church. So I have Parker Wood from Liberty High School. Cameron Wood from Liberty High School. Drew Yates from Taylor Middle School. Ben Fadre from Taylor Middle School. And Jonathan Kuhler from Cedar Lee Middle School.
Would everyone please rise to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. So we're gonna sit up front here while Dr. Jack presents some special awards to people, right? Is that what we want to do? Yes.
Except for you.
Except for me? Okay. Okay.
I get to kick off the special presentations tonight. As part of the school division's strategic plan, Aspirations 2015, and the school board's conservation policy, a recycling committee was created to promote environmental stewardship through recycling. This year, the recycling committee sponsored the Third Annual Recycling Poster Contest to increase awareness and educate students and the community about the benefits of recycling. Over 2,000 students participated in this contest, and all the creative posters were displayed as part of the Spring Arts Festival here at Falkir High School last month. A committee was selected at each school to judge the schools' posters, and the top three posters from each grade level were sent to Central Office for a division-wide competition. The recycling committee, which is represented by each school, there's a member on each, on the committee from each school, as well as school division administrative staff judged the posters and selected the division-wide grade-level winners. I am honored tonight to recognize our creative and inspiring students who placed first and second for their grade level in the 2015 Recycling Poster Contest. For those students who are here tonight, as I call your name, I'm going to ask you to please come forward, stand at the front while I announce all the grade-level winners, and then you can be congratulated by our school board chair woman. For kindergarten, Ava Nitski Pierce Elementary School. And the pictures are displayed up front, so hold your applause till the end, if you will. Also kindergarten, second place, Nicholas Reitzel Bradley Elementary School. And as Nicholas comes forward, for first grade, Alexander Barton Greenville Elementary School, first place. Alexa Melendez Bradley Elementary School. For second grade, Casey Surtis Pearson. I'm sorry, did I skip one? Oh, Luke, I'm sorry. There was a tie for second place at first grade. Luke Dearborn Smith Elementary School. Thank you, Ginger. For second, I'm so busy looking at them coming down, I don't want to read the names. For second grade, Casey Surtis Pearson Elementary School. Alex Cruz Pierce Elementary School. For third grade, Paige Hartman Brumfield Elementary School. The posters are just awesome. Neil Curtis Brumfield Elementary School, also for third grade. Fourth grade, Bethany Barner Pierce Elementary School, and Emily Pearson Miller Elementary For fifth grade, Jada Lessin Pierce Elementary School, and Emma Costanza Miller Elementary School. For sixth grade, Bethany Torek Marshall Middle, and Marie Sue Warrington Middle. Seventh grade, Javier Jimenez Cedar Lee Middle. Danielle Crouch Marshall Middle. Eighth grade, Sidney Floyd Cedar Lee Middle, and Daniella Portillo Warrington Middle. For ninth grade, Cullen Dunne Kettle Run High, and Carlos Martinez Liberty High. For 10th grade, Arwin Heppard Kettle Run High. And we just have one poster for 10th grade. For 11th grade, we had our first-ever video submitted, who was selected first place, and that was produced by Rowan Miller, and we're gonna play the video right now.
Now, I know that many of you are absolutely diverse about the environment, and want to help the world around. But for those of you who do care and want to help Kettle Run truly go green, recycling can be a hassle if not understood correctly, and that's why I'm here. There are a whole bunch of recycling containers at Kettle Run. In the halls and in the comments area, there are receptacles that come in assortment of shapes and colors, and it's very easy to get them confused. So let's begin. If the container is tall and gray, it is meant for mixed paper only. Not smutty cases or gross paper towels. If the container is tall and green, tall and blue, short and gray, or bottle-shaped, it is meant for empty plastic bottles and aluminum cans only. Secondly, each classroom has at least two recycle bins. We have the familiar blue bin for bottles and cans, and now we have a taller blue container that is meant for mixed paper only. Now, listen up. Anything that is contaminated with food or a spool of liquid should not be thrown into any recycling container. Honest, I don't go in trash. Guide break. Okay, so now we've got all this sorted, but it's time to talk about the recycling reps. They've got a pretty important role. They are responsible for getting the material from the bins in homeroom and taking it down to the comments area, and then bringing the bins back upstairs to homeroom. Each homeroom should have three reps, two regular and one backup. These should be people who are able to commit to this every week on recycling. After the reps bring everything down to the comments area and sort everything out into their respective bags, the recycling club goes around the whole school with carts and collects the week's material from the workrooms, the computer labs, and the hallway containers, and brings it all back to the comments area to join the rest of the bags. Then, they take it all outside to the big blue dumpster out back. If you are interested in joining the recycling club, you should talk to Mrs. Hagan in room 225, and she will gladly give you the rundown on how everything works. Also, if you have any further questions, you can find me or Mrs. Hagan, and we will gladly answer them for you. Thank you for helping Kettle Run High School truly go green.
Well, you can see that Rowan is a natural in front of the camera. For second place, for 11th grade, Erica Hackett Falkir High School. And for 12th grade, the first submittal was done by three students, Austin Bain, Nathan Barton, and Jaylen Payne Falkir High School. And second was I. Crowen, Kettle Run High School. So you can see from these posters that we have very talented and creative students in our schools, and all these posters that we've seen here tonight may be viewed on our website at FCPsGoesGreen, if you want to see them further. And students, on behalf of the school division and the recycling committee, I would like to thank you for your participation in this event. Please join me in congratulating these students. They did already receive their certificates and got prizes as well, and they were sent to them. Thank you so much.
It's my honor and privilege to present the winners of this year's Spelling Bee, County wide Spelling Bee. So will Kira Lucas and Kira Holland, please join us up front. Kira and Kira. Following a record-breaking 42 rounds, Bradley Elementary School 4th grader Kira Lucas became the Spelling Bee champion for Falkir County. Marshall Middle School student Kira Holland, last year's Spelling Bee champion. And Kira Lucas were the only spellers remaining by the end of the 14th round. It was a tough battle of brains for the next 28 rounds. The two correctly spelled such words as, and I took the privilege of writing these down phonetically, because not only can I not spell them, but I can't pronounce them, ampere, ubiquitous, protagonist, pusillaneous. I think she had some coaching, probably from Brian Gorg. Adam Brait, did I pronounce that one right? Thank you. And Tautology. As Falkir's first and second place winners, both students represented Falkir County in the Regional Spelling Bee at James Monroe High School in Fredericksburg. Please join us as we applaud these P-R-O-D-I-G-I-O-U-S spellers. Congratulations. And you have a future as a stand-up comedian as well. That's gonna go in the scrapbook someday, my book of memoirs. Also, recently, we had the Regional Science and Engineering Fair, a second annual, and our students did extremely well, I'm proud to say. So will Hannah Pross, Rachel Seeburger, Stephanie Schuffer, Joe Barrett, and Alice Christensen, please join us up front. The Second Annual Falkir County Regional Science and Engineering Fair in March drew 51 public, private, and homeschool high school and middle school students throughout the county. Cash prizes totaled $4,400, and were in line as well as a chance to advance to a higher level of competition with larger cash prizes. The top three middle high school projects are eligible to apply to Broadcom Masters Competition, while the top 10 high school projects were eligible to compete in the Virginia State Science and Engineering Fair. The top high school honors, the top high school honor was earned by Hannah Pross, who attends Mountain Vista Governor's School and Kettle Run High School. She received $1,500 for her project, which is ironically the same project I did for my senior project. Parabolic Equation Impact on Solar Reflector Conversion Efficiency. Yeah, that's right. And will be able to compete in the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair in Pittsburgh. The second-place winner was Rachel Seeburger, also a Mountain Vista and Kettle Run High School student, who won $750 for her project, The Effects of Taillets on Aerodynamic Performance. Stephanie Schuffer, who was a 7th grade student at Warrington Middle School, won first place in the junior division and received $600 for her project, Mirror Image. Second place in the junior division was earned by Marshall Middle School 8th grader Joe Barrett, who won $400 for the project Biomass Energy, Garbage In, Gas Out. And other Falkir County Marshall Middle School students took third place, and eighth place, oh, excuse me, took third place, 8th grader Alice Christensen won $300 for her project, Music and the Mind. We are proud that so many of our students at Falkir County Public Schools shined, and that's literally what they did, at the Regional Science and Engineering Fair. Please join us as we congratulate these innovative students. See if she can find any spelling errors on the.
Okay, and now we have the exciting announcements. What? Oh, okay, if anybody wants to leave now, it's okay if you leave now, if you don't want to stay for these exciting announcements. So go ahead and leave, and thank you.
I want to go home with my exciting homework.
But thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. That's great. Okay. The April Personnel Committee meeting is canceled. The April Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board meeting is canceled. The Building Committee will meet Thursday, April 23rd, at 8:30 a.m. in the School Administration Conference Room, and Chairman's Night will be Monday, April 27th, at 5:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a school board work session on Monday, April 27th, at 6:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. And there will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, May 6th, 8:00 a.m. in the Central Complex Building Conference Room, and there will be a School Support Council meeting Wednesday, May 6th, at 7:00 p.m. in the School Administration Conference Room. And there will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Thursday, May 7th, at 5:30 p.m. in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. And the next school board meeting will be Monday, May 11th, at 7:00 p.m., right here in this room. Okay, Citizens Time. The community involvement is a very important component of a successful school division, and the school board really welcomes your input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. So we first have Nancy Griffin-Bonair from Center District.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about Give Local Piedmont. Here's a car magnet that you may see around town. Show of hands, how many know, how many people here know what Give Local Piedmont is?
Yay.
How many of you have absolutely no idea what I'm talking about? Okay. Give Local Piedmont, here's my elevator speech, is a 24-hour online giving opportunity. It's benefiting our local nonprofits. Last year was our inaugural year. We had 107 nonprofits participating, that's in Falkir, Culpeper, Rappahannock, and Madison Counties. We raised $675,000. This year, we are shooting for a million. We have 138 participating nonprofits. Whole bunch of them are in Falkir. I'm gonna let Mia talk about the, what she came to talk about, but the Falkir Excellence in Education Foundation is one of them, and we are hoping that we get a lot of support. But regardless, it's a fantastic day to give back to the nonprofits in our community that do so much for us. We're hoping that we spread the word. You'll see a lot of posters around town, you'll see these magnets, you can get some from me if you'd like them, to put on your car, and we're just asking everybody to support the cause. It's May 5th, starting at midnight, you can donate online. It's givlocalpiedmont.org. Very simple. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mia Grabner, also from Center District.
Good evening, Dr. Jack, and ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name's Mia Grabner. I'm on the Communications Committee for Falkir Excellence in Education Foundation. This foundation evolved from the existing Committee for Excellence in Education that awarded grants to teachers. It has now expanded the agenda that provides grants for a variety of programs to benefit students, teachers alike. So far this year, we have awarded $10,000 grant to educate teachers and a $5,000 grant to our summer STEM camp. Our next goal is to be able to award grants towards on- and off-campus experiences, better known as field trips. We hope to enhance them and to hopefully alleviate some of the cost to parents. In order to do that, though, we are participating in two current fundraisers. The first is the Give Local campaign. With the community's support, we have the possibility of raising over $100,000 based on the number of donors and rewards from Give Local Piedmont. For this reason, it is imperative that we get the word out about our foundation and the Giving Day campaign. We need this to go viral. Please spread the word to everybody within five feet of you that on May 5th, go to the Give Local Piedmont website and pick on Falkir Excellence in Education. For the golfers in our community, we are holding the 16th Annual Superintendent Scramble Golf Tournament on May 11th, and that's gonna be at Falkir Springs Country Club. All proceeds will benefit Falkir County Public Schools. Businesses or individuals can become tournament patrons, title sponsors, or sign up as a foursome or individual play. There are many options to choose from. You can find the registration at fakirie.org. So please tell everyone about our foundation, the Give Local Piedmont campaign on May 5th, our golf tournament on May 11th, and remember, a lot of employers will do donation matching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. That was excellent. Thank you, thank you. Okay, Helen Worst, also from Center District. Boy, Center District is getting around.
Can I go here? How can you do about the hope of?
Oh. Okay.
She's from Center District.
Or do we know?
Sally Murray, I didn't know that the Give Local Piedmont was going to be a subject of discussion tonight. I have to put in a pitch for the Mountain Vista Governor's School Foundation. We also raise money for a lot of needs of the governor's school that are not covered by the local school district and by a state stipend, and I hope you notice tonight how many of those science fair winners are Mountain Vista Governor's School students. It's especially important this year that we raise extra funds. By the way, we support rocketry and several other extracurricular robotics. Other, Duke can tell you more about it, he's on the foundation board. I'm on the, he's on the foundation. The Board of Directors or whatever of the foundation, I'm on the foundation board, the separate entity that raises money. The biggie is, we're gonna start with 10th grade in the fall of 2016, and so that means we're gonna need even more funds. So on May 5th, when you go to that website, give.
After you donate to the Falkir Excellence in Education Foundation.
I was just gonna say that, after you give to Excellence Education. Go over there and click on Mountain Vista Governor's School Foundation, and the thing is, there actually are awards for numbers of donors, regardless of amounts. So give $5 here, $5 there.
Minimum is 10.
Oh, minimum is 10. Got a lot of help here tonight. Minimum is 10, but $10 here, $10 there will make a really big difference for education. Thank you.
Okay, thank, okay. Board reports. Mr. Bland.
I was not here for the Building Committee meeting, so I'm sure Ms. Grove will take that part, but I would like to thank Ms. Downs and her HR team for the outstanding job you did this past Saturday at the Teacher Job Fair at Liberty. I would also like to thank those who participated, Dr. Jack, Dr. Mitchell, and Frank Finn, and also a special shout-out to Ms. Todd and Ms. Joyce Duruso, and, let's see, it was John Thompson. Two former teachers who set up a discussion panel with all the prospective candidates, and they did an absolutely outstanding job. The exchange was very fluid, it was very informational, I mean, it was a lot of fun. So thank you for a job well done.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Gorg.
A few weeks ago, I was invited to attend Warrington Middle School Youth and Government Day. I think it may have been one of the first you've done in a while. I see Mr. Johnson sitting there, so I'm gonna get my cues from him, but we were able to go with 7th graders around, they walked from the school into downtown Warrington and walked around to something like 12 government offices to talk to the various people at those locations about their role in government. And then they held a mock Board of Supervisors meeting later on, and it was really an amazing day. But for these students, I mean, they weren't all engaged by the end of the day, they were a little bit hungry and tired, but I'm telling you, they really got to see local government in action, and so much of our curriculum is based on national or international news, federal government issues, that to see local government in action was very, very important. So I want to thank Mr. Johnson for that. The highlight, most of them said, was actually their visit to the courthouse and to the court records room, and Ms. Wolf, because she got to take them actually into a courtroom, which they hope to never see, and, but it was really great, and I really would encourage more schools to do that if it's viable. It was, you know, that sort of hands-on learning to get a love of community, love of country, and understanding how to be civically involved is incredibly important and a major component about the public school system. So thank you for doing that, and I hope we can see that again next year from Warrington and maybe from other schools as well.
Well, and I just want to hop on that from a county perspective of a county employee who was doing some of these little presentations with them. The county employees loved seeing those kids, and we loved sharing and trying to think how we can tell what we do in 15 minutes. It was really good. The employees liked it as well, and they were really impressed with how great the kids were. So Ms. Riordan.
I only have one thing really to discuss, and one is I just want to let some people aware that there is a situation that's going to affect Falkir County. As many of you might be aware, that there is a project by Dominion Power, it's called the Warrington Wheeler Gainesville Reliability Project. They had a couple of different avenues where they were gonna pull the power lines to make the connection. They've changed that, based up, they had taken two routes off of their consideration that went through Falkir County. Based upon, I think, a lot of feedback from people in Prince William County, staff has recommended that the two options that go through Falkir County be back on the table. They will directly affect Center District. They will directly affect Center District and the Scott District. And of the plans, the power lines will go right in front of the one exit into Kettle Run High School and Greenville Elementary. So, I would suggest that anyone who's concerned about the project, please go to the Dominion Valley, I mean, not Dominion Valley, Dominion Power website and the FCC website as well. They're gonna be taking public comment and having meetings, but we could very well have power lines going right in front of our high school. Thanks.
Ms. Grove.
Excuse me, I have several things. Had the pleasure of attending the Eagle Spirit Awards down at Liberty a few weeks ago, and that's always a very fun event, 'cause you see so many surprised faces and so many proud parents. So, a good morning there. And then I got to go down to Mary Walter one morning and have breakfast. And they graciously showed me many, many of the details involved in making sure that we are complying with all regulations, and, and I don't know how she does it. I don't know, great job. Then, got to go over to Southeastern for, where they had their projects on display.
The project symposium?
Yes. It was a great, great event also, with lots and lots of people there, I was very happy to see that. They've done some tremendous work there. We had a Parks and Rec meeting a couple of weeks ago. And Cheryl, I don't know if you know, that they have now, we have a new route for the project there at Cedar Lee.
Oh, okay.
So it will, they've got it figured out.
Okay, wonderful.
Yep. And Building Committee, we will have, I think if you read the minutes, we'll, you see where we'll have wrapped their up and running in all of our schools by the beginning of school next year. Most of you all are, I think you and Duke are meeting tomorrow, I've had your meetings about middle school studies.
Yes, we did.
Okay, and then the PBS, PB Smith Playground Ribbon Cutting on Wednesday.
15.
Afternoon.
2:15.
Yep. And then, we had a very nice Fauquier High School wrap-up lunch with the architects and the contractor and some of us from school system. And Janice was presented the lead gold for the project, and, so, had a busy time.
Okay.
I think that's it.
I just wanted to say that on, there's a, the Fauquier Hospital and the Warranton Police Department are sponsoring a Used Meds and Sharps Collection Day on April 25th. That's a Saturday from 9:00 AM to noon. And why that's so important is to make sure you don't have drugs sitting around your house that maybe your kids could take to school. Always a bad deal. So, use that as an opportunity to get rid of stuff that you're not, not using. If you get on their website, they'll tell you how to do it. I had the, Sandra Rowe, a 2nd grade teacher at Bradley, invited me in because she needed to interview a board member about her doctorate program she's doing. And I got to watch these students present their famous American presentations where they dressed up. And it was amazing, one of the kids did a presentation as one of the Washington Capital Hockey players, and also someone did Einstein, and they answered questions about each of their persons. And it was amazing how great these 2nd graders were. I also wanna piggyback on what Ms. Grove talked about, about the symposium at Southeastern. It was incredible how creative these students were with their projects. It was about their life, how they artistically expressed who they were. But also, I, I was so amazed at how they loved that school and, and that program there really works for them. Also, Taylor Middle School, Selena Dickey, a social studies teacher there, invited me to come and hear the Holocaust survivor come speak to their students who were studying that, that period of time. And this gentleman was from Lithuania, and he was the most incredibly positive person, giving all the things that he survived. And then they had children ask him questions, and, and I loved the questions they asked. Like, someone asked, "Did you have a dog?" And this gentleman went into the, and no one thought to ask him that, but a child would. And it was just so wonderful to hear him talk about his personal life and his family and his dog that he had before he went into the concentration camp. And then Liberty's Career Fair was awesome. It was, a lot of people from the community, really wanna thank all the community members who came to talk to kids and adults about different jobs and opportunities in the area. And then the only other thing, I think that's it, I think that's all. I do, the last, and certainly not the least, I wanna congratulate Major Warner and Cindy Carter for their Washington Post winners that they were awarded. Cindy Kirk, excuse me, Cindy Kirk, her, the awards they won, that was really great. And Dr. Jack.
Thanks again, everyone, for the birthday wishes, I think. Appreciate it very much. I wanted to remind folks that next week, or the student advisory meetings at the three high schools, I'll be, be meeting with high school students that day. I always look forward to those meetings very much. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, Financial Management, Mrs. Kotak.
Good evening, you have before you the financial management report for February 28th. The one, it's, everything's on track, the one area that have variance, as expected, is food nutrition. At this time, we're feeling the effects of days of pay without revenue coming in. So it's, as of the end of February, it's not much, but that's the beginning, we'll see. Any questions? Do you need larger print? Sorry, I'm going back.
Okay, Health, Human Resource Department report.
Good evening, the following is a report from the Human Resources Department. When this report was presented, we only had two vacancies. Currently, we have 30 certified vacancies and 20 classified vacancies. We're beginning to gear up for next school year. As Mr. Bland stated, we did have our job fair on Saturday. We had 280 qualified applicants attend, and they needed to be interviewed. We did different sessions to educate them on our school division. Three people walked away with early offers, and we're following up with 15 individuals, hopefully this week, on 2015, 16 vacancies. Also, on Tuesday, March 31st, we had a county job fair where we also had our school partners there for transportation and custodian positions. 244 potential candidates walked through that door. The whole day was very busy and was an exciting time. So I guess that sign out there on 29th really got them into Fauquier High School. Any questions this evening?
That's great, that's good, thanks. Okay, Consent Agenda.
I'll move that the school board approve the minutes of the March 9th school board meeting and March 23rd special school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions which include the following. New and newly hired six lead bus driver positions, five bus drivers, one bus aide, one custodian, and four school nutrition workers. The resignation of three teachers, one guidance counselor, one nurse, one instructional assistant, two custodians, and two school nutrition workers. The retirement of 11 teachers, one supervisor, one social worker, one diagnostician, one speech-language pathologist, and one secretary-bookkeeper. And the release of one custodian. Revisions to Policy 3-3.13 fines and fees. Revisions to Policy 6-4, 6-4.4 graduation verified credits and SOL requirements. The annual special education plan and religious exemption 041315.1. Second.
There's been a motion in a second that the school board approve all the things that she just read right there? Any discussion?
Not fair.
I'm not, I'm not reading it.
I just wanna make a point for our, our guests from the Boy Scouts, that this section here is done on a number of items that this school board has previously reviewed or regularly reviews. So, when you see a lot of these action items and you're looking at this board making decisions, we've gone through our due diligence on these items, and they've been thoroughly discussed and vetted. Just for your benefit, a lot of the things we talk about, we may not discuss quite extensively at this meeting, but they have been discussed before.
Okay, that was good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay, information items. One of the things I was invited to do was go tour some of the cafeterias, and I was really amazed at all the things they do. So, I'm gonna introduce April Plummer, who is our Director of School Nutrition, who is so dedicated to the job. When I met her there, I noticed that this is her license plate. This is April's license plate.
That's right. She says I drive like, my, my red charger, like a little old lady.
But, well, let me say one more thing. One of the things I was reading about the goals of our nutrition office that people don't know is to encourage and promote nutrition education and coordinate food service programs with classroom instruction. And these guys really do it, I was really amazed. So, take it away, April.
Thank you, Madam Chair and school board members, Dr. Jack. I brought quite an entourage, they didn't know, Dr., they're gonna have to sing for you tonight. They're just now being put on the spot. Actually, this is just a small representation of some of our managers, and I thought best for them to tell the story. So there's a couple of slides, and there's a few things they're just gonna focus on very, very quickly. So, this is only the tip of the iceberg of the things that they do, so.
Good evening, my name's Liana Roberts, I am the manager at the Mary Walter Cafeteria. We hosted Ms. Grove a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to briefly talk with you about the importance of the school breakfast program. At Mary Walter, we serve very high population of free and reduced students. Roughly two years ago, I noticed that the number of breakfasts that I was serving was declining. I didn't know right away what to do about it. The only things that I did know was that breakfast is the most important meal of the day. I know that students that receive breakfast at school have a higher attendance rate, and that students that eat breakfast are more alert and learn. So, talked it over with my principal, and we decided to try a grab-and-go breakfast. If you can flip this slide. What we do is children that don't wanna eat in the cafeteria in the morning, they come in, we put their breakfast in a bag, and they're able to take it back to class, minus like syrup or jelly, things that might make a mess. And with this, they're able to feel like they can accomplish their morning work and still eat breakfast. I would say roughly half of my students that come to breakfast choose the grab-and-go option. Of my roughly 180 students that are free and reduced, I serve probably close to 90-some free children, breakfast each morning, and maybe 20 of those reduced, as well as 50 to 60 paid students. So on average, I'm feeding roughly 150 students at my school breakfast each morning. So, I really want to say that it's important to encourage our students to have breakfast, and it's such a deal at school, you can't beat the price. So, thank you for having us, and thank you for encouraging our program.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daphne McGee from Seahunter Ritchie Elementary School, I'm the manager there. At Ritchie, the school nutrition staff have a designated bulletin board in the dining area with the cafeteria. Each month, I work with the, the school nutrition staff work with the, the art teacher, and we select a theme, and the art teacher goes back with a selected group of her students, and they do a theme for us. And this particular one, this time, is they do a brainstorm, and then they come up with the art. And then, we, actually, we choose one, and then, as you can see, those are like, what we, we choose from. And then the winner gets to go and put it on the bulletin board, and it's displayed for a month at a time. Ms. Hill is our teacher, and like I said, she does the, she selects a class. And then the school nutrition staff, which is my girls, they select the winner which best represents the theme that we, that we chose for that month. The winner gets a, to transform it on the draft, onto the bulletin board. And then, here's one of our winners. They receive a certificate, a small token of recognition, and they get their photo. And this makes the third year that we have done this project, and it seems to be working, it's successful. Thank you for having us, and happy birthday.
I'm gonna speak for Tori Kearns, who is unable to be here. At Brumfield, they just love to dress up. This is one of the workers at Brumfield. This was actually Dr. Seuss's birthday, and they were encouraging "Read Across America", so she put on this whole outfit. I, I don't, I bet the kids didn't even know who she was. She read to the students, they did Thing 1, Thing 2 hats, they had Green Eggs and Ham, and she read to the students during lunch, so. And they're so creative there, she actually took a Number 10 can for Thanksgiving and a paper plate, and they made, and picked greens from outside and used them as decorations for the line with the number, if you know what a Number 10 can is, big Number 10 can. And this is one of her walls, the students participated and did, you know, made the feathers on the turkey. So the different classes made the feathers on the turkey. And they really enjoy their interaction with the students in many, many different ways, so.
Make sure you're talking to the microphone, so when, on YouTube, they can hear you.
Hi, Michelle from Auburn Middle School. I'm gonna read mine, so I can get through a lot really quick. As managers, we have the, have to be resourceful and creative beyond the menus and the walls of our kitchen. Middle school is a time of training students how to make wise, educated decisions while letting them enjoy being a kid. I use my display boards and entrance boards and entrance doors inside the kitchen, but also I extend outside into the, into the cafeteria and into the school. These are examples of our display boards that we have. Auburn has been gracious by letting us use two standing whiteboards that are, and a big display board, four by eight. I use the display boards not only in the cafeteria, but we also put them out in the hallways to menu announce, promote, decorate, but mostly important to educate. This is an example of, the next one, is an example of National Back Lunch Day. We promoted a fun and different way to enjoy a healthy balance on the go, especially for families that are always on the go from home. Some of the things that we've done is, I go out into the community, to the merchants, and I collect gift cards. A lot of people are willing to donate, and people don't realize that. So they donate gift cards and items for the school, and I give them away. The kids do different contests and things to win things for free. This is one of the soccer balls that we also get, we earn points. If you collect points from the Nestle's Rewards, you get a lot of free items also. This is one of, this is one of the posters. We also use, to educate the kids, is we color coordinate our signage to make, that matches the my plate. So the signage that we have in the cafeteria also matches my plate, so it's easy, easy to notice the colors to match with what the components are. Our goal is to teach our students why and what they are purchasing, along with how to spend their money wisely. We make every effort to market eye appealing items that the students want to eat very healthy. These are some of the examples of signages on here that we use, just very few, in the cafeteria. It is, they're clearly marked for students to choose monetary, to know the monetary value of what they're spending, and we help them when they get to the register. Eye appeal is instant, but education lasts. Oh, you, sorry. Goes back to the my plate.
Yeah, that's great.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Jack, happy birthday, and I hope we're not keeping you up past your bedtime. I'm Sherri Henning, I'm the cafeteria manager at Liberty High School. Go Eagles! And as you can well imagine, it can be challenging to grab the attention of high schoolers with a promotion. So sometimes we have to go on a grand scale, I mean, they're busy with their studies and boyfriends and girlfriends and so on and so forth. So, this first slide shows the showcase right across from the cafeteria. Fortunately, at the beginning of every year, there's a sign-up sheet for this showcase, and I pounce on it pretty quickly. For October and March, October being National School Lunch Week during that month, and March being National School Breakfast Week. So that, that is the National School Lunch Week, get in the game with school lunch. You'll see, if you could go back to the other slide, please. You can see the different. Sports that are available, actually, that's my son's lacrosse stick over there. That are at Liberty. So, it kinda grabs their attention, you know, they're walking by it every day. So, we decorate the showcase in the main hallway with "Get in the Game School Lunch", with the scoreboard, logos, and sports equipment. The students filled out a survey of their favorite lunch entrees, which helps us know what we wanna, you know, what we can menu to them that they'll wanna purchase.
What were their favorites?
Anything with chicken. Sorry, no shepherd's pie. Anything with chicken. 11 prize winners were drawn with a mountain bike for the grand prize. We can go to the next one now. As I'm tasked with quality control for food that we serve our students, I also have to perform quality control on the prizes that we give our students. I also have to perform quality control on the prizes that we give our students. So, that is me in the food court riding that bike. And, um, this is Sarah Swartchik, and she was the lucky winner of our mountain bike. Thank you.
That is just a small sampling of all the things that are going on in our schools, and I want to invite all of you. Come have lunch, come have breakfast. You're welcome anytime, no invitation needed. So, thank you again for, for letting us have this time.
All right, well, thank you. It's, you guys do so much more than just feed lunches, so thank you so much for making it like it is at Ritchie Schools. All right, textbook adoption.
I wasn't sure if I should bring my textbooks, but I realized this is the large print edition, so it fits in with the theme.
Missed that one, didn't you? Hearing's gone!
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Jack, the forty-year-old version. Tonight, for your information, we have seven textbooks to present, and we are asking for your approval, and they're listed before you. Overall, I'd like to highlight that these textbooks are being recommended by our adoption committee because of their strengths in their content areas, their layout design, their knack for clarity, as well as the online resources they provide to both students and teachers. Additionally, for our APDE courses, the adoption committee is recommending these textbooks because of their alignment with the college board curriculum, and additionally, for their ability to meet our needs for the standards of learning. Specifically, I'd like to point out in World History that Worlds Together, Worlds Apart, along with its companion readers, is being recommended because it's able to address the larger global picture needed for the AP curriculum, and it has the best blackboard package of the reviewed tech, reviewed textbooks. Worlds Together, Worlds Apart provides the best combination of readability, overall covering of important historical content, and modern technological resources. For Brinkley's American History, the adoption committee is recommending this textbook because it is most tailored to the redesign of the AP themes and skills, and makes efforts throughout to have students make connections between the past and present. The textbook is the best combination for students as it covers critical topics well, but remains quite readable. Again, we were impressed particularly at the supplementary, supplementary online resources to support students. Onboard Connect and Scoreboard, which are all McGraw-Hill products, all help students develop the skills they need for the redesigned course. Because it is computer-based and individualized, it allows tailored review with immediate feedback to reinforce the content. Government by the People is being recommended by our adoption committee for similar reasons as the two previous APDE textbooks. Particularly, the accompanying test prep book will help, uh, students prepare for the AP exam. We currently use the twenty-third edition of this textbook, and we are asking approval for the twenty-fifth edition, which includes information on the latest election in 2014. To complement our APDE government course, we are also recommending the Lanahan Reader in American Polity. We are currently using the fourth edition of this reader, and we see value in its continued rees- uh, continued use. We are asking for approval of the sixth edition, which will be available February 2016. Similarly, we are recommending the eleventh edition of Comparative Politics Today, and our current, um, book in this course is the eighth edition. Comparative Government is a course that often does not have enough students enrolled for a section to run in our high schools, but students that still want to take this course are able to take it online. We believe this textbook is a great resource for students because it is clear, effective, and uses well captioned visual materials. In our American Civil War course, we are recommending McPherson's Ordeal by Fire, which includes excellent maps for troop movements and battles, as well as timelines and documents for students to refer to. Additionally, the footnotes are very useful, not only for the information they include, but to model to students' academic writing. Lastly, we are recommending John Hope Franklin's From Slavery to Freedom for our African-American Studies course, again, because of the strength of the online resources for teachers and students, including, um, the use of interactive maps. As you can see in your information packet, these items and their evaluations were open for public review. I have copies here tonight. And the estimated total cost would be a hundred and ninety-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. We believe we have the funding, and if not, we will purchase these over a multi-year period. We are asking that you approve these recommendations at your May eleventh meeting. Do you have any questions?
Can the public still review them?
Yes, ma'am. They are still available at Central with their evaluations.
Is the evaluation rubric, the aggregate, available?
Yes, with, and side by side with the textbook at Central.
Okay. Is that digitally, the, what, the recommendations by the teachers and evaluation of the other books you looked at as well, or those?
They're not digital.
They're not digital, okay. So, they're available?
Okay. Any other questions? No, that sounds great. Thank you, thank you. Why don't you put it as a work session? Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, pre-Labor Day waiver.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Um, as you know, in Virginia, schools are required to open after Labor Day, public schools, unless you qualify for a waiver to open before Labor Day. And I know this will come as a surprise to you, but due to inclement weather, we do qualify. You have to, um, be closed for an average of eight days for any five, the high five of the last ten years. And we calculate this every year, and over the past, uh, ten years, our high five is twelve point six days. So, next year, we once again qualify. And this is for information only. You don't have to take action on it. We just report it to the state online and let them know that we have qualified for the waiver. Any questions?
Nope. No, that's great. Thank you. Okay, resolution to adopt a dental plan?
Good evening. Um, the following is request that the School Board adopt the resolution to award the dental insurance plan contract to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. Falkir County and Falkir County Public Schools issued a joint RFP for dental services for our employees. Eight proposals were received. A review committee of both school and county employees, as well as our consultant, Wells Fargo, um, reviewed the contracts, and then recommended that Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield be our dental insurance. Uh, the Board of Supervisors adopted the contract on Thursday evening, and tonight, I'm requesting for you all to adopt it and move it to action. Any questions?
I had some concerns earlier, but I think, um, I'm okay. I think there's some misinformation out there among some of the dentists in town.
Absolutely. Um, Anthem, um, ten years ago, we did move from Anthem to Delta, and, um, Anthem's plan was not very rich. And so, part of the contract negotiations was to make sure that our employees did not lose coverage and still could go to dentists who were not in the plan. So, I believe we've done very well with our contract.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, fiscal year sixteen budget update. Dr. Jack.
So, the long, the long process of adopting the, uh, fiscal year sixteen budget is almost concluded. And, uh, I just wanna thank lots of people, the Board particularly, Paul McCullough, who was here earlier, Board of Supervisors, Marcy, all senior staff folks, uh, who helped to put this together, because we did some creative things, and, uh, we were able to make quite a bit of progress towards our goals. Goals established by the School Board, and, um, which are right there. And it occurred to me as I was reading over these goals that, uh, at this summer's retreat, we'll be generating our next, uh, biennial budget, um, set of goals, our, our agenda of goals, and that's kind of exciting. But if you look through these in the last two years, well, in current year and next year, we've addressed, um, big chunks of all of those, uh, different goals, and, um, I think we've made some very, very good progress, particularly with the first bullet on that page. So, feel good about this process. Uh, you know, I was, I guess I was one of those skeptics related to the two-year budget process that the county, uh, enacted this past year. And, uh, of course, I, I guess we were sort of in the easy year of the two-year budget process, as we just sort of knew what, uh, what the cards we were dealt. But next year will be a different story as we lay out the next two-year budget. So, uh, if you look at this, uh, the first column of course, um, the next source, that is, that is, uh, the current year's budget. Beside that is the recommended. There is the difference, and then the percent increase. So, if you look down at the bottom under amount difference, the one point seven six million, that is the in, overall increase from current year's budget to next year's budget. Vast majority of that is increased from local funding, the one point three million dollars, uh, that we were promised last year, and that's, uh, the Board of Supervisors has approved via a, um, a small increase to the local levy. So, uh, that came to pass, and then additionally, recently, we, we received an additional three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in state money, which is great news, and a slight reduction in, um, the VRS rate. So, it's less money we have to pay towards VRS. Uh, in terms of the revenue picture, very little change. Uh, local money is still around sixty-two percent. State money is still around thirty-four percent of our overall budget. Federal is just shy of, shy of three percent. And again, at the bottom, you, you see that we've, um, recently received additional state money through the governor's, uh, amended budget. Uh, expenditure categories, as I mentioned every time, just about every time I do a budget presentation, very pleased that, you know, seventy-six percent of our, uh, budget is gonna be going towards instruction again, and that's very exciting. Uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, I think the recommendation from the state, Marcy, I think, is sixty or sixty-five percent. And, uh, we're well above that, and that's exciting. The vast majority of our dollars go towards, directly towards instruction. Now, in terms of the additional funding, the, the total, which is the accumulation of, um, the additional money from the state, and then the reduction in the VRS rate, which, just a bill we don't have to pay, so that money goes back to our budget. Our recommendations are to add one point five, a position and a half, plus an instructional, instructional aid. Those will be going to Kettle Run High School. Uh, the motivation for doing that, of course, has to do with, um, understaffing at Kettle Run High School, which has been a problem now for a few years or several years. And we've, we've been able to make dents in that the last couple of years, and we'll probably continue to be doing that because they're still understaffed, and their ratios of the three high schools, their ratios are the worst in terms of student, teacher, teacher ratio. So, we're trying to make inroads there. Uh, the Virginia Preschool Initiative, EPI grant, um, this is very exciting. We're gonna be able to offer a full-blown preschool program next year, and it's as a result of a couple of different things. One, receiving, um, some money from the county. County is giving us the money that they had allotted for preschool, for the Head Start preschool program. Uh, second is the pre, uh, the VPI grant itself, so we'll be capturing that money to use towards the VPI program. Uh, and the third piece is the existing, um, program, um, uh, that is run through Head Start. As I mentioned, we're capturing that money too. So, taking all those things together, plus a little bit of money, uh, we're adding towards, as a result of this, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. We're gonna add some of that money towards the VPI program or, or our local Virginia, our local preschool program. We're gonna be able to offer it at three sites, uh, Coleman, Ritchie, Miller, is that correct? Okay, so we'll be offering a preschool program at three sites. And the number one, um, requirement, I guess you'd say, uh, as far as identifying students for those program is students in need, uh, students, uh, in poverty. So, uh, there may be some transportation issues related to that, because there's only three sites, but we'll be serving kids all throughout the county. But, uh, Janice has promised to, um, work all those problems out by twelve o'clock tonight, which is amazing. Uh, but, so, but I think that's probably the biggest hiccup we have, is working out the transportation piece. But those three schools have space, and we have very, three very motivated principals at those three schools who are excited about taking on this, this program. So, I'm excited that we're able to offer it, and hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to expand it. Supplements adjustments, it's been about fourteen years since we've done anything to increase supplements, except, I, I know one year prior to my tenure, there was a reduction in sup- in supplements for, uh, sponsors, band, music, athletics. So, we, we've fallen way out of whack with supplements. Uh, in fact, in many instances, if not most instances, we're about at twenty-five, thirty percent of market in our region. Um, we, we are really getting beat up, and our folks who work in schools, who spend time after school working with kids, uh, they're doing it for very, very little money, when they can go to another school division and make a lot more. There are a few stipends that are actually above market, but there's not very many of them. The vast majority are well below market. So, what we're proposing doing is taking of, I think, a majority of that three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, or a near majority of it, plugging it into stipends and trying to get it at least eighty percent for each of our stipends. In other words, making sure each person who's working after school is at least at eighty percent of market within our region. Uh, and I, I feel good about that. I think it's the right thing to do for folks who, um, you know, there's fewer, as our high school principals have pointed out to us several times, there are fewer and fewer people in the buildings who are involved in coaching and sponsoring because it doesn't pay. And, you know, they're certainly interested in doing it for the mo- in most cases, but there's no money in it, very little money in it. Uh, so, we're gonna do something to address that. And they're still not making very much money, if you look at the number of hours that they work. Uh, but at least we're, uh, doing something to show that we value that their, their sacrifice for the school division, and they're working with our students. And last but not least, there are some salary adjustments. We're looking to make high school registrars come to mind. Monitors who get paid, uh, very, very little money, uh, substitutes. So, we're looking at some of those, um, non-traditional categories where folks who are making very little money. Monitors particularly, just they don't, they make not much more than minimum wage. Lunch monitors, recess monitors, things like that. So, we're looking to identify some of those, or a few of those categories that we wanna bump up somewhat. It's not very expensive, but it's certainly the right thing to do. So, that's the recommendation as related to that additional three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that we're receiving from the state. Is that my last slide?
Okay, any questions?
Can I ask one question while you're there? Uh, the di- the difference that, on the new budget between what we're getting for the, from the state for the VPI funding and what we're contributing to that, do you have that, is it, is it the same amount in and out?
What we contribute to VPI?
Is it the same, I mean, are we, because we have a new additional expenditures, expenditures in that area. We're receiving almost the same amount of revenue, but our budget is to, um, spend additional, or is that not correct?
We receive a hu- what's the amount? Is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly for VPI grant, give or take? Okay, so, we, we, we receive not enough money from the state to cover a, a thirty-five student preschool program. We don't get enough money from the state, but we're not currently capturing any of that money.
Right.
Uh, but now, we will be, but it's, it's still not enough to run the program. The county's kicking in around fifty thousand dollars of local dollars that they had been putting towards Head Start's preschool, so we, we're receiving that money, and then, as I said, taking part of that, um, from the additional state money and using it to make it a full-blown program. So, we're not capturing any of the VPI money right now.
Okay, anything else? Okay, sounds great. Okay, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would, uh, motion that the School Board adopt the resolution to adopt the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one million, six hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Second?
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to the School Board adopt the resolution to adopt the FY two thousand sixteen budget in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-four. Is there any discussion? Um, I just wanna say I too was, uh, not too happy about the two-year budget plan until we did it. And actually, I'm, I'm liking this. I think it's really working well and letting us work with students and, on education rather than mess with the budget the second year, so it's been great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it.
And I will back up.
Yeah, we have to go back.
I'll move that the School Board move information item ten D to action item eleven B for consideration for approval this evening.
Oh, thank you. There's been a motion and a second that the School Board move action item ten D to action item number eleven B for consideration and approval this evening. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Okay, now.
And then, I'll move that the School Board adopt the resolution to award the dental insurance plan contract to Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield.
There's been a motion in two seconds that the School Board adopt the resolution to award the dental plan insurance, dental insurance plan contract to Anthem Blue Shield, Blue Cross, or vice versa? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The ayes have it.
I motion that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing considering student discipline matters pursuant to Virginia Code, section two dash two, uh, two point two dash three, seven, eleven, A, subsection two.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering student discipline matters pursuant to Virginia Code, section two dot two dash thirty-seven, eleven, subsection two. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Well, thank you all for being here.
What time is this then?
What time is it?
What time is it? Hearing start?